Good morning and welcome to City Hall. Roger Velasquez is the pastor at Shekinah Fellowship Church in South Oklahoma City. He's here to lead us in the invocation today, and afterwards I'll ask Councilman Ed Shadid to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Let us pray. Gracious heavenly Father and loving God, we come before your throne of grace this day to bless this council meeting. May you give the mayor and council members and every other city leader that is here today wisdom and strength that they need in making all the decisions that will honor you and will bless this great city. We recognize our need and our dependence upon you, oh Lord, and for your great mercy, grace, and power, may you order their steps in every decision that they make concerning the welfare of our community. And I also pray for this wonderful and great city, for your protection over this place, that for all those that would desire to bring any kind of harm, Lord, that you will cause their plans to be distracted and not come to fruition. Lord, I also just bless this wonderful city and this meeting today with the words of Aaron as he blessed the nation of Israel with these words. May the Lord bless you and keep you. May the Lord make his face to shine upon you, and that he would be gracious to you. May the Lord lift up his countenance upon you and give you great peace. Amen.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
they have a performance going on that we want to draw attention to, we bring over one of the performers to kind of give us a preview and to invite the citizens to come over to the OCU campus and see the performance. And that is the case today. Erin La Croix is here. She is part of the Into the Woods performance tonight, and she's going to sing On the Steps of the Palace. Erin is a senior from New Jersey. Is that right? Junior from New Jersey. Erin, when you're done, I hope you'll take the microphone and at that point invite people to come to the performance and give us more details. All right?
He's a very smart prince. He's a prince who repairs. Knowing this time I run from him, I spread a page on the stairs. I was caught on my ears, and I thought, well, he cares. This is what just matters. Better stop and take stock while you're standing here stuck on the steps of the palace. Think, what do you want? You think make a decision. Why not stay and be caught to think, well, it's a thought that would be his response. But then what if he knew who you were, would you know that you're not what he thinks that he wants? And then what if you were a prince with invasion? Although how can you know you are till you know what you want, what you don't? So then which do you pick when you're saying no sign on yourself where everything's wrong? Or where everything's right and you know that you'll never be the wrong? And whichever you picked away quick because you're starting to stake to the steps of the palace. It's your first big decision. The choice isn't easy to make. To arrive and to fall is exciting and all, but sure, you know, it's scary. It's fun to deceive when you know you can leave, but you have to be wary. There's a lot that's at stake, but you've still only that much just because getting stung in this step on the steps to arrive along home and avoid the collision. Even though they don't care, we better off there, but there's nothing to choose, so there's nothing to lose. So you pry up your shoes from out of the glue without a big eye. You know what your decision is, which is not to decide. You'll just leave him unloved. For example, a shoe, and then see what he'll do. Now it's he and not you who are stuck with his shoes. That's you, not you. And you've learned something too, something you never knew, on the steps of the palace.
Well, you're the first person to take a shoe off when you performed at City Hall, but a reminder, she'll be playing Cinderella this weekend in this performance, so congratulations, and tell us how we can come and watch.
Sure, okay. So the performances are this weekend, April 26 through the 28th, Friday night at 8:00 PM, Saturday at 8:00 PM, and Sunday at 3:00 PM. So you can get on the Oklahoma City University's website and order tickets, and we would love to see you all there. It's a, the show is a conglomeration of fairy tales. It's based on Grimm's Fairy Tales, so you have Cinderella, Jack and the Beanstalk, there's a baker and the baker's wife, there's a giant, Little Red Riding Hood, and a witch, and a wolf, and it's just kind of about how all of their stories intermingle, so we'd love to see you there.
Thank you. Erin La Croix, let's show our appreciation one more time. She was trying to get out there in time. I'm hoping she made it. If you're following along on the council agenda, we're in the office of the mayor, and item 3A is a presentation by Debbie Hampton, the Executive Director of the United Way of Central Oklahoma. And Jim, this is the result of our City Council workshop.
It was. At the City Council workshop, we had some discussions on poverty and some of the things that the city was doing to address poverty, and so we've asked Debbie to come this morning to discuss some of the things that the United Way is doing. Good morning, Debbie.
Good morning. Very happy to be here. I brought several folks from United Way, and as you all know, we fund 61 of probably the strongest nonprofit agencies in Oklahoma City that deal with social service issues. I'm going to turn it over to one of our board members, George Young, who also is our Ethics Chair on our board, which is one of the highest positions of the board with United Way. So George?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and staff, and all the Senate Council members. I'd like to quickly say, I've been to two City Council meetings this month, and I've received more culture, James, here than I have almost a whole other month, so it is a wonderful presentation you do with OCU. I'm here to introduce Keith Klosinski. He is originally from Portland, Oregon. He has been here in Oklahoma City five years. Keith has a bachelor's degree, a Bachelor of Arts degree in interdisciplinary studies in psychology, sociology, and philosophy. He also has a Master of Arts in Cultural Anthropology from San Diego State University, and he is currently working on a PhD in Cultural Anthropology from the University of Oklahoma. Keith is also currently the Director of our Central Oklahoma Turning Point, and if you're not familiar with that, it is a wonderful program of United Way that works and focuses on bringing Central Oklahomans together to find solutions to the major health problems of our city and area. Keith?
Thank you, Dr. Young. Thank you, City Council Mayor Cornet. The first thing we want to start with when we talk about poverty is how do we define poverty? And I think one thing to keep in mind is that poverty thresholds that the federal government uses to define poverty were developed more than 40 years ago, and do not generally account for increased standards of living, childcare expenses, variations in medical costs, and geographic differences in living expenses. But these thresholds are still in use today, and they are compared to income before taxes and do not include the value of noncash benefits. Basically, this does not fully reflect the economic well-being of individuals and families. According to the 2010 American Community Survey, 23.8% of all Oklahoma County families with children survive on a household income below the federal poverty level. This is compared to 17.9% nationally. In 2011, the poverty threshold for a family of four was $23,050 per year, and this rose to $23,500 in 2013. This is a monthly income of $1,921 for a family of four, or approximately $63 per day, $16 per day per person. In 2011, 36% of single mother households lived in poverty, and 25% of Oklahoma children lived in poverty in 2011 as well. 32% of jobs in Oklahoma paid wages below the poverty level in 2010. Thus, while the unemployment rate in Oklahoma, 5.2% as of last month, is well below the national average of 7.2%, nearly one-third of all working Oklahomans do not earn enough money to even remotely approach a living wage. According to the Oklahoma Policy Institute, in 2011, a single parent with two young children living in Oklahoma County would need to earn $16.74 per hour at a full-time job to cover basic expenditures without public or private assistance. The federal minimum wage is currently $7.25 per hour. In 2011, 89.8% of all students in the Oklahoma City Public School District were eligible for free or reduced-price meals. In my field, anthropologist Oscar Lewis theorized about a culture of poverty in the 1960s. Lewis's idea was that those living in poverty are so entrenched in the difficulties of everyday life that they do not have the vision to see ways out of poverty. This term was widely accepted at the time and was the basis for the Monahan Report in 1965, subsequently the War on Poverty, but has since been deemed highly controversial. Those living in poverty in Oklahoma do not necessarily maintain this culture of poverty, but rather are subject to deep societal structural issues that make it extremely difficult to rise above the poverty level. These are the effects of poverty, and they tend to be the most traumatic to our most vulnerable members of society. Starting with children, Patrick McCarthy, the President and CEO of the Annie E. Casey Foundation, a foundation that's very specifically dedicated to childhood poverty issues, has said that child poverty is in some ways a leading indicator of how the country is going to be doing down the road. Nearly all of the social problems that we worry about in this country are heavily correlated with child poverty. Poor children are more likely to experience changes to their family structure and be raised by parents with minimal education. Their home environments are likely to be stressful, characterized by sudden and frequent moves, and are less likely to be cognitively stimulating. Thus, children who grow up in poverty are more likely to struggle in school and eventually drop out and suffer from emotional, behavioral, and physical health problems. Homeless children and youth enrolled in Oklahoma Public Schools increased by 75% between 2007 and 2010, according to the National Center for Homeless Education. In the 2010-2011 school year, there were approximately 2,000 homeless students in Oklahoma City Public Schools. Imagine having no home and trying to perform academically at the same time. One of the consequences of poverty for some people may be incarceration. Approximately 11 of 1,000 Oklahoma children will see their parent go into an Oklahoma prison each year. Families are unable to grow and share life events due to the long-term separation caused by incarceration. As a result of emotional and social deprivation throughout their childhood, the children of incarcerated parents are five times more likely to go to prisons themselves. Seniors are another group of people who are heavily affected by poverty, and they are increasingly retiring without the financial means necessary to sustain a comfortable living. Many retirees find themselves returning to the workforce after just a few years of retirement. The costs of both aging in place and assisted living are quite high. While a retiree may no longer have a home mortgage, they still have living expenses to cover, and increasingly, aging in place requires modifications to one's home to make it more amenable to senior living. The cost of these renovations can run into the thousands of dollars, making them available only to those who have substantial retirement savings and/or incomes. But the situation with assisted living is quite similar. In 2011, according to the Oklahoma Assisted Living Association, the average cost of assisted living in Oklahoma was $2,200 per month. If a retiree is on a fixed income of 65% to 70% of their last level of earnings, which is a standard measurement, and let's say this retiree made $50,000 per year upon retirement, that means they are living on a fixed income of $32,500 or $35,000 per year, which is about $2,700 to $2,900 per month. Thus, an assisted living facility eats up about 75% to 80% of their monthly income. Because of these costs and the ever-rising costs of medical care, as of 2010, the fastest-growing age demographic in bankruptcy filings is aged 65 and over. Many of these bankruptcies are due to incurred credit card debt used to cover these basic living expenditures and medical costs. Education is also affected by poverty. The Annie E. Casey Foundation's Double Jeopardy study, released in 2011, April 2011, found that 1 in 6 children who do not read at grade level by 3rd grade do not graduate from high school on time. Only 4% of students who read at grade level by 3rd grade fail to graduate. The Double Jeopardy study also cites that poor children may reside in neighborhoods with low-performing schools, begin school with an underdeveloped language and social skill set, and miss school more frequently than non-poor children because of undiagnosed or untreated health issues. As a result, 32% of children who spend more than half of their childhood in poverty do not graduate from high school compared to 6% of children who have never been poor. If students do not graduate high school, they will not have the ability to attend college, and the importance of a college degree cannot be understated. According to Education Week, college graduates earn nearly three times more per year than high school graduates. This means they are much more likely to earn a living wage and beyond. Now, the state of Oklahoma hasn't proved its health rankings, but there is a strong correlation between poverty and health. In 2012, we came in 43rd in the nation for overall health standards, but we ranked 43rd in diabetes, 47th in smoking rates, and 45th in rates of obesity. All of these health issues are most prevalent among those living in poverty. Oklahoma's rate of persons lacking health insurance, including households above federal poverty thresholds, is one of the worst in the nation. Current estimates indicate 23% of Oklahomans are uninsured. The national benchmark is 11%, according to the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation. Persons living in poverty are much more likely to have no insurance and suffer poor health than the population at large because of this lack of insurance. This staggering number of uninsured persons is one of our enormous barriers to improving public health standards. Uninsured persons receive less health care and have more adverse health outcomes, but also suffer more chronic illness than those with insurance. The uninsured have a lower perceived sense of wellness and are less likely to receive preventative services. People without health insurance are more likely to postpone necessary care and forego preventative care entirely. As a result, the uninsured suffer more hospitalizations from preventable diseases than the insured. A 2011 report published in the New England Journal of Medicine ranked Oklahoma as the state with the most restricted access to health care, largely due to this high number of uninsured persons, the low number of primary care physicians, and sparsely populated rural areas throughout the state. Moving on to smoking, people who lack a high school diploma or live in poverty are nearly twice as likely to smoke as the rest of the population. As a result, low-income smokers are at a higher risk for smoking-related diseases, have less access to health insurance, and are more likely to receive delayed diagnoses of smoking-related illness compared to insured Americans. As with other public health epidemics, persons living in poverty also suffer from higher rates of chronic and preventable diseases, largely due to nutritional intake and access to health care. Historically, those with lower income tend to have higher rates of obesity. 1 in 3 Oklahoman adults does not participate in physical exercise of any kind, and Oklahomans living in poverty are far less likely to exercise than the rest of the population. Persons living in poverty are more likely to be obese, have poor nutritional intake, and perform less exercise, as mentioned above. In Oklahoma, 51% of all of our restaurants are fast-food establishments. The national average is 27%. The cost of time and travel to acquire food and the time needed for food preparation also influence consumption choices by low-income households. Fast-food options represent low-cost, convenient options for low-income households due to their lack of preparation time, caloric density, and numerous locations throughout Central Oklahoma especially. The greater availability of this fast food and lower comparative costs of fast food compared to fresh foods contribute to a poor diet among low-income households. One way to look at this is to think of the concept of competing needs. As income increases, a household's ability to acquire goods and services increases, but families limited by financial hardship will choose affordable, convenient options over more expensive ones. For example, a single mother working two jobs may not have the time or energy to cook a nutritious meal for her children, and stopping at fast-food establishments offers a quick, affordable alternative to a traditionally-prepared meal. There's also a strong link between poverty and mental illness. Gallup polling suggests persons living in poverty may be twice as likely to suffer from depression as persons with higher income, and dental health is also affected as well. Poor dental health poses a barrier to employment for many people, increases the likelihoods of other adverse illnesses, and reduces quality of life measurements for the overall community. A growing number of persons without health insurance, especially low-income households, are relying on emergency rooms for dental care, and according to the Pew Center on the States, dental care utilization in emergency rooms rose 16% from 2006 to 2009. Over 830,000 Americans received their initial dental diagnosis in an emergency room instead of a dental practice. I'd like to turn it back over to Dr. Young to give the council an opportunity to have a Q&amp;A session with two people that we work closely with who are on the ground fighting poverty every day in Central Oklahoma.
Thank you, Keith.
Let me quickly, Mayor, thank you for your national attention to health by the programs and things that you have done. It's always a pleasure to come and to be with you, and let me quickly say to recognize my own City Council person. I live in Dr. Shadid's area, but my church is in John Pettis' area, and I just like to excel here, so if I could, if I wasn't an ethic officer, I'd vote for all three of them. Let me quickly introduce the two subject matter experts that will come and to share with you, and both of them, I am familiar with their organizations and work very closely with them, and as a pastor has referred individuals to them. The first is Dr. Valerie Thompson of the Urban League of Greater Oklahoma City Incorporated. Dr. Thompson is not only over the Urban League, but she's also an adjunct professor at Oklahoma City University, the School of Social Work, and the University of Oklahoma's Political Science Department. She has published work in research journals and does a lot of work in nonprofit work. She serves on a host of boards, advisory committees, including J. Morgan Chase National Advisory Board, Leadership Oklahoma City, and two of the boards or committees that you would know about, Maps for Kids Trust and Maps III Senior Health and Wellness Subcommittee. She is married to her husband Warren, who I know, and she has a daughter who is studying to be a concert pianist, and so she is well-rounded. Our other expert is Ashley Jones of the Salvation Army of Central Oklahoma, and she holds a Bachelor of Arts degree in psychology from Langston University, and a Master's of Social Work, Administration, and Community Planning degree from the University of Oklahoma. In her work, she serves as Divisional Director of Social Services for the Arkansas-Oklahoma Division, and currently serves as Director of Social Services for Central Oklahoma Area Command. She directs, evaluates, and does the administration operation and staffs all of the social service programs of the Salvation Army in this area. And so obviously, we have two individuals who know, who are on the front line and are doing great work, and they will come now and field your questions.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council persons. I just want, at sake for brevity, I will just be brief. If there are any questions, I will entertain them, but I would like to say that the Urban League of Central Oklahoma, we service over 10,000 people throughout Oklahoma City, or metropolitan area, and we touch 33 census tracts throughout the city. So how does that relate to your particular ward that you serve? Well, approximately 70,000 people in the Oklahoma City metropolitan area live below the poverty line, and within that, it touches every one of your wards. Only 60% of the people that come through our doors are African-American or minorities. So poverty knows no color. It is something that touches our children, it's something that touches our reentry population, it's something that touches our elderly. And so at the Urban League of Oklahoma City, we work really hard with the United Way of Central Oklahoma to address those needs that the people that you serve in your wards every day. Thank you.
Hi. It's my pleasure to be here today, and thank you for allowing us to do this presentation on poverty. As she mentioned, it does touch all areas, all classes, all races. We at the Salvation Army have seen a huge increase in the number of families that are underemployed, and by that I mean they may have had a full-time job with benefits, now they're working two-part-time job with no benefits. We work really hard to work with our United Way partner agencies, and just to give you an example of what the families face right now, is they might come to the Salvation Army and they're actually coming to get utility assistance. Well, in turn, we find out that we could help them with groceries and other areas of services, so we sit down with them and we make sure that they understand and give them a list of soup kitchens in the area, so that way they could take their family either for lunch or also for dinner. So that way they could take that into account and use that money to help put fuel in their vehicle to get to work or to get to school. So we're just working really hard in the community to try to address all the needs, and one of the things that I'm most proud of is how we all work together to address the needs. We can call on one another, and in most cases, get the needs of the families addressed. Thank you.
Is there any questions that we can entertain, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I have a brief comment. I worked with United Way, 1971 probably, so I have experience that goes back a long ways, but in raising funds, you could talk about all the good work that agencies do, but just you can sum it up and just ask one question. How would you like to live in a city where we didn't have the agencies that are supported by United Way? Think about what it would be like without the work these people do, and I think it's a real sobering thought and thought that would, I think, encourage anybody to support United Way.
Thank you, Councilman Ryan.
Ed?
Can you talk about, and I really appreciate this presentation, by the way, I'm very grateful, but, and we've done a really comprehensive job of defining the scope of the problem, but can you talk about some solutions, solutions that work, solutions that have some literature behind them at the municipal government level? We run a transit system where we influence the built environment, we build the infrastructure, we handle some pass-through federal dollars. What can municipal government, city government do to lift people out of poverty and help those living in poverty?
That's a great question, and I'm a native of Oklahoma City, and the wonderful thing that I have seen is the transformation of Oklahoma City. We are a big league city, but with that comes big league problems, and so we have a growing population of poverty, but we have a transit system that's not adapt to helping people move throughout Oklahoma City. The people that we serve, we did some analysis and found that the people that we serve, sometimes they have to travel 40 miles one way to obtain decent employment, and if you're on a fixed income, that's difficult. So transit is an issue, education is another issue. We work with Oklahoma City Public Schools as long with the Department of Transportation, and what the research shows is that we have to do a better job of educating our children early on and maintaining a good mentoring system throughout their education careers so that they can stay in school. Our dropout rate is continuing to increase. So how can city government get involved? It's supporting those systems that already are in place, it's looking at additional ways to support transportation systems, it's looking at employers that are willing to come within the city limits where people live to, so that they can help have a living wage.
And I agree. I just think it starts from the top down, and y'all have shown great leadership and support. I've always worked closely with the Grants Department as far as the Emergency Solutions Grant, as well as CDBG, and I think y'all have shown great leadership in supporting those programs. One of the things that could, of course, funding is always an issue. It'd be nice if we had more funding for all the programs, and I know as far as, we at the Salvation Army will be rolling out programs on poverty at our new facility in 2014, and will work alongside with Regional Food Bank and other partner agencies of United Way, and so I think just the continued support that y'all have continued to show, and that y'all do value the services and programs that the city funds, and also the guidance. I think it's great that y'all support the staff here at the city, and they provide great support and leadership to our agencies, and we all work together, go to monthly meetings, and really try to do this as a joint effort to reduce poverty in Oklahoma City.
On another, excuse me, on another line, I would like to mention housing. The city planning staff, I think they do a great job. We are one of the many agencies that try to do affordable housing in places that are blight. I think the city is looking at different ways of trying to put more affordable housing in areas that can see some market improvement.
Mr. Mayor, I am blessed to have the Urban League in Ward 7. Thank you for your service to Ward 7.
Thank you, Mr. Pettis.
Meg?
And Mayor, if I, again, if I could just make a comment, I think this is a perfect example of the kind of collaboration.
example of the kind of collaboration between municipal government and the, both the nonprofit world and the faith community, who really do fill the gap in places where funding is scarce, and we make great partners. So thank you all so much. Debbie, the United Way, you know, does great work, and each of those 61 agencies under your umbrella contribute greatly to making Oklahoma City the wonderful place it is.
And we all still have a lot of work to do, but thank you for yours.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council for our presentation. We appreciate your continued cooperation so much.
Appreciate your work. Ron, item three of the council agenda, item three B through F is a series of appointments.
Mr. Mayor, on the appointments to the River Trust, the terms for Kathy Williams and Paul Dudman state to 2019, and that should be modified to 2017. We have long appointments, we just don't have that long appointments.
All right. Can we have a motion then on that, on that change? Let's vote on that change first, passed unanimously. Now, can we have a motion on items three B through F? All right, cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. On item four, it's the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item four A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for April 16th, and item four B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for April 9th. Any comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item five is request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, several this morning. Let's start on the consent docket on page three. Consent docket, page three, items six H, one and two, it's PV 086. The applicant has withdrawn this request, consequently, the item should be stricken. So that's six H, one and two. And then moving on to the concurrent docket, on pages 10 and 11, concurrent docket, we'd ask that items U, V, W, and X be deferred until May 14th. There was supposed to have been a school trust meeting yesterday, but they didn't get a quorum, so that those items were not acted upon yesterday. So there will be another school trust meeting rescheduled, and we will bring those items back to you after the school trust acts on those items. So again, on page 10 and 11, that's item seven, U, V, W, and X deferred until May 14th. Then under items for individual consideration, on page 13, item eight I-1, item G, 2612 Northwest 15th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed. Moving on to page 14, under eight J-1, item C, 3100 South Golf, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item E, 1321 East Park, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item G, 2829 South St. Clair, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item J, 1319 Northeast 23rd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And finally, item M, 2724 Southwest 38th Street, we ask that that be stricken. Again, the owner has secured.
Are there any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, well, let's reassess the council meeting. Convene is the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, there are two items. Comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes, passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, just the claims and payroll. Cast your votes, passed unanimously. Adjourn the OC PPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, and again, just the claims and payroll. Cast your votes, passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right, we have a motion in a second on the consent docket. Is there any individual considerations?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have questions in regards to six F, six N, and six R. Is the developer here for six F?
Let's, hold on, let others have a chance to get in line. You'll go first, though, when we're ready.
Mayor, if I could, six A, B.
A, B?
Yeah.
All right, John, jump in on item F.
Okay, six F, I have a question. Is the developer here for that project?
Generally, the developers aren't here when the items are introduced, so I don't believe he's here today.
That's correct.
Okay. My quick question in regards to six F, is this project going to cost the city any additional funds?
The rezoning project?
For, as the streets, sewer, and so forth, for this particular development?
I'm not aware of any additional funding, but I can find out for you and get that information to you.
Okay, thank you. And then, item six N, where is this location, and how much is it going to cost, and when will it be finished?
Councilman, this is just the beginning of the land acquisitions. The Public Works is doing that for us, so as I said, we're just beginning this. We don't have appraisals yet, so I don't have a lot of that information right now, but the subcommittee and the advisory board is determined, and council also is determined that that's where the location of the whitewater will be, so we're proceeding.
Yeah, the location is just to the east of the Boathouse Row on the north side of the river. So that's the general location, and we're going through the process of condemnation. It will be, we don't have the price lined up, it'll be a couple million dollars to acquire the land.
Okay, thank you. And then, six R, has these projects been identified?
Mr. Councilman, yes, the projects have been identified for this sale. I would be happy to get you a list of those. Each year, as that sale comes up, we will visit with city council to let them know, but obviously, with the change in a couple of our councilmen, including yourself, I'd be happy to get that list to you after the meeting.
All right, thank you.
Meg, item A, B.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention that A, B is a landscape improvement and maintenance agreement with Oklahoma City Beautiful to help provide landscape and maintenance services of Manuel Paris Park down just south of the river, and that's a very important community park. It will, it will join our Central Park once we get the MAPS III Park underway, but it's, again, very much appreciated for Oklahoma City to help us take this on. I think maintenance has been a little bit of an issue down there, and so it's exciting to see a collaboration with another great nonprofit.
Any other comments or questions on the consent docket? All right, we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes, it passes unanimously. And we're on to the concurrents docket. All right, we have a motion in a second on the concurrents docket. Any individual comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes, passed unanimously. We're on to item eight. These are items that require a separate vote. We start with a series of zoning cases. The first is an ABC issue in Ward Five. The address is 10400 South Western. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Is there anyone here speaking against this proposal? It's been recommended by the Planning Commission, and I would move for acceptance.
Okay. Do we have a second? All right, cast your votes. And item eight A passes unanimously.
Your Honor, they are asking for the emergency clause on this, and I'd recommend that we approve that.
Okay, a motion on the emergency, how about a second? Cast your votes, and the emergency passes as well.
Thank you.
On item eight A two, it's an ABC issue in Ward Eight. The address is 6900 Northwest 122nd Street. Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. Francis, has anybody signed up to speak on this? There were no protesters at the meeting, and it was unanimous with the other planning commission. It's in an area that is rapidly becoming a commercial intersection. At the opposite end of that intersection, there is already two restaurants and a liquor store, so it won't be a new adventure to have liquor in that area. I would move for approval.
All right. Any comments or questions here on item eight A two? All right, cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item eight A three is a zoning issue in Ward Four. The address is 3901 Noma Road. It's currently R-1 Single Family Residential, and it would become an R.A. Single Family One-Acre Rural Residential District. Pete?
And looking at this, this is zoned R-1, is that right? I mean, it's kind of way out in the country to be zoned R-1.
It was annexed in as R-1, and it's being rezoned to the R.A., which, so it was, it was zoned R-1 when it was annexed. It's been that way.
I move approval.
All right, we're voting on item eight A three. Cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item eight A four has been deferred until May 14th. Item eight A five is a zoning case in Ward Seven at 3500 North Sooner Road. It's currently R-1 Single Family Residential, and it would become a new simplified plan unit development district. John?
Is the applicant here? Can you please give us a brief intro to this pod?
Yes, sir. Councilman, my name is Dennis Box, and Keith Gibson and I are here representing the applicant. This is a success story in that there's an existing facility on the site at the present time. My client did some research and analysis to determine if there were some ways to get some beneficial uses from the methane that comes out of any landfills. The answer came back yes, and we are now going to develop the plant that will help in what our research and development showed was a viable set of uses for end products. Ultimately, we hope to begin by the end of this year, and we hope to employ 18 additional people at this facility.
All right, thank you. Any protesters? I move for approval.
Dennis, it's so oddly shaped. Is this the property line? Is that?
It's the property line, and it's the way the landfill sits, and then we're getting ready, rid of some ponds that were there, and with the existing building that sits there, this is the configuration that made the most sense to keep them both together.
Okay. John made a motion to pass it. Yeah, Pete?
I have a question. What did your research show the other uses were, other than just the use of natural gas as it's normally used?
There'll be nothing sold from the site, but it showed that there would be some uses for diesel fuels that could come out of this, and some plastic products that could be sold. So we're excited about the opportunities.
Do those have to do with the methane side of it, or are they just plastic products that are generated through the landfill?
The methane side of it, coming off the landfill.
Is that a proprietary port?
Yes, our end product, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right. How about a second on item eight A five? Cast your votes, passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Item eight A six is also a zoning case in Ward Six, or Ward Seven at 300 Northwest 95th Street. It's currently R-1 Single Family Residential, and it would be a new spud. John?
Is the applicant present?
Garrett with Garrett and Company, 9701 North Broadway Extension.
Can you briefly tell us what this pod is?
This is a vacant piece of property that's surrounded by a warehouse district and I-1 zoning. We're asking it to be zoned as a spud so we can build three warehouses on it. We were approved by the planning commission.
Excellent. Are there any protesters? I move that we accept.
All right, comments or questions on item eight A six? Cast your votes, passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Item eight B is a recommendation to close the platted 20-foot alley between North Walker and North Dewey, north of Eighth Street. And Meg, we have someone who has signed up to speak.
All righty. Would you please come forward? I see that the applicant is indeed here. Good morning, John.
Good morning. Beau Patterson with McAfee and Taff for the applicant, SSM Healthcare St. Anthony Hospital. This is our application to close the alley that presently exists running through Block Six, the brush edition, which right now has no paving to it. It's an open parking lot. Saint's plan is to make one contiguous, secured, lighted, controlled parking surface for security purposes. The hotel that's located on the north middle of the block, Century Hotel, is owned by Hollis Properties, and I believe Mr. Hollis is here today. They were the sole protester on this. We believe we've reached a resolution with Mr. Hollis by moving our southern, or, I'm sorry, our northern fence in the proposed lot back 10 feet and giving him an easement into the alley, that portion of the alley that abuts his property, he'll be able to get construction vehicles in and out of the back of his property, which was his concern. I'll let, I think he's here today to address that, but we've given him a draft of an easement agreement. We think we've reached a resolution with it. This will really benefit this area because it's going to be secured, lighted, controlled parking, which will be open to the public. So that's our application, and I'd be happy to answer any questions with respect to it.
All right.
Thank you. Mr. Hollis, did you want to come say anything, or are you? And we'll need your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's William Hollis. I'm the president of Hollis Properties. The, my office is at 608 Northwest Eight, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73102. My concern, Mr. Patterson and I have been talking at length about my ingress and egress to the back of the building. I've looked at some of the drawings he's presented, and I'm trying to digest it, to be honest with you. I've, I tentatively said that I kind of agree, but I'm thinking about, I'm trying to understand and project into the future, if I need to have a truck to go back in there, how can the truck get in and out? Now, Mr. Patterson said he's had his engineers go in, and they've looked, and they've said that they think that a trash truck can get back in there. I'm tentatively accepting this, but, you know, I don't want to just say that I'm accepting it. And then, a few days from now, I'll go back and look and see, because we've been talking about a week and a half on this, and I've looked at several different drawings, and I've looked at some today that are a little bit different than what I saw last week. So I'm just trying to mash those together and try to determine, will this meet my needs as well as allowing St. Anthony to go on and make the changes that they intend to make? So I'm not, I'm not here to try to impede their progress, I just want to make sure that I'm protecting my interest for my building.
Can you point out on the map where your property is located?
It's right, somebody has a pointer on it, it says apartment.
Where it says apartments, Mayor.
It's right there in the middle there, on the north, on the ninth, South Ninth Street. That's Ninth Street there where the pointer is, and my place is there. The parking lot, I have a parking lot next to it, and the alley runs all the way through. Now, in my objection, I had said that I would be totally agreeable to shutting half of it off and allowing me to go in and out. Mr. Patterson and I have talked, showing me some drawings where that they will give me, I can't point, I don't have the pointer to the drawing, but to the, to my right of the building there, yeah, over there, that's, part of that is my parking lot, and part of that is St. Anthony's parking lot. There is a drawing that they, a couple of drawings they presented to me showing where that they will give me ingress and egress on where that pointer is up there to go around, and they're going to, to give me some additional space to where I can get a truck in there if I need to get a truck to my building. The building is a three-story building, and if I need to service it and maintain it in any way, I'll need to get a service bucket truck or whatever, you know, to get up in there. And that's, those trucks are maybe 30 feet long, and it needs to be able to get in and turn and get in. That's my concern. Now, they, they have told me that their engineers have gotten, have walked it. I haven't. I just, I just need to make sure that, to my satisfaction, and that's my only concern, is getting a truck in and out, you know, without just undue difficulties.
Yeah.
Bob, the alley is in and of itself 20 feet wide?
That's correct.
And so, Beau, the easement that you've offered to Mr. Hollis is how wide?
It would be, it would be for the entire portion of the alley that abuts his property to the south. In other words, the ingress and egress for any truck would come through his existing parking lot, but with the full ability to turn into that 20-foot-wide alleyway. And Mr. Hollis is correct, we've had our project developers, Reese Associates, look at this, and they've assured me that, you know, any truck, a construction truck, a city truck for purposes of trash removal, would be able to access that 20-foot-wide alley by swinging around through. alley by swinging around through the existing turn that's there now. You can't turn in there now because he has a fence up that would come down when our fence goes up 20 feet behind it and the access would be through the middle of his parking lot where cars aren't parking and wouldn't be able to park anyway. They will ingress and egress through the middle of his parking lot, his existing parking lot, which will remain open and will be able to turn effectively to the west into what will then be the 20-foot wide alleyway, which is already there and is in fact being closed pursuant to this ordinance, but that portion will remain open. It's effectively the 10-foot reversion that would come to Saint's. We're giving him an easement in that because he would already own the north 10 feet by virtue of his reversion.
Okay. So if I understand that clearly, Mr. Hollis, that means that the entire alleyway remains open behind your property? And so that's what you currently have? So if you've got access now, you should continue to have access?
And if, I don't want to put words in Mr. Hollis's mouth. I think his concern is that what he has in addition to that now is a straight shot all the way to Walker. In other words, trucks can come down Walker, shoot down the alley and get behind his apartment building there. That, our plan would close that portion of access by necessity because otherwise we wouldn't have a contiguous, secured, lighted parking lot. And so whereas he's going to lose the ability to have a truck shoot down from Walker, he'll still have access, albeit coming through his own existing parking lot. It's just that a truck will now have to make the corner and go in and I'm advised that that's perfectly doable with the size of the alley and his existing parking as it is.
So the, so the new configuration would be that a truck would access through 9th Street?
Correct. If you can imagine, if you can imagine a big U-shaped parking lot with his property sort of cordoned off in the middle, all the fencing will be ours. His fence would effectively come down and any construction or other vehicles that would need to access the rear of his building would come through the ingress or egress to his parking lot and make the turn to the west into what will be the open portion of that 20-foot wide alley that's there right now.
Okay. Well, I certainly appreciate the fact that that lot will be lit, secure and open to the public. We've got a gigantic parking problem in this midtown area that would be very helpful to get taken care of.
Okay, therein is my concern. One of the drawings, the original drawings, when we actually walked off, showed they were giving me an access to the right, right of my parking lot to where I could drive in there and go around. And my problem is I have parking for maybe 20 to 24 cars. Once St. Anthony puts their parking in and takes control more or less of the area, my people won't have any place to park if I have to do construction because it's, they won't, they won't be able to park in the parking lot the way that I looked at it this morning on the drawing is that they'll come in, I'll have to move my people and they'll have to walk several blocks to try to find someplace to park. One of the original drawings that I was shown, showed that they gave me the, to the right of my parking lot or to the east of my parking lot. And on your drawing there, it's, I don't know. I don't know if you can see this. Can you all see the drawing? Okay. So it's, it's to the, it's to the east, to that direction. It's where they had given me an entry there where that little indentation here is up there on that square where that arrow is. I was to have a place to come in and then come around in there into the alley. And that way I was, had the understanding that I would still have parking as well as to be able to get in and get to my place there.
Do you own the parking?
Yes, I own it.
Okay.
Yeah. That drawing is not correct. It's showing all that together, but, but, but that, where that square is there, where that arrow is, half of that is mine.
Okay.
And, but they were, they were going to give me a little, little slice over in there where I would come around and come in there. If I'd had that, then I wouldn't be up here talking. But that's, that's the problem is I was looking at it this morning and I thought in the future, you know, you can do some things in a hurry and then two years, three years down and you look and you say, man, I wish I had just said something. So that's why I'm up here saying now. Again, I am not trying to impede any progress because I'm all for Oklahoma City growing and I think with St. Anthony and all the other hospitals being able to provide service, that's just a benefit for all of us and it helps as a marketing concern, you know, for making Oklahoma City grow. And I'm for Oklahoma City growing. I have other properties and I want, as Oklahoma City grows, I want to grow too, you know. So, so I, again, I am not for impeding the progress and growth of St. Anthony or Oklahoma City. I just want to make sure that I'm protecting my entrance where I can get in and service my building.
Mr. Patterson, is it, is it correct that the current drawing was just presented today or?
No, that's not correct. We, Mr. Hollis has been given notice, this matter actually came before the Downtown Design Review Commission and the Planning Commission. We've given all the statutory notices at every point and Mr. Hollis entered the fray only after he got the third notice, which was the notice before, for the city council meeting. We've nev, I want to clarify a couple of things. We've never shown him, and this may just be a miscommunication or maybe a lack of understanding of the drawing that we submitted, but we've never agreed to give him property on the west, I'm sorry, on the east side of his parking lot or an easement to that effect. The drawings that we've given him originally and the subsequent drawing that we gave him to specifically show the 20-foot wide alley being open to him, show a fence that would be St. Anthony's fence going in a U shape around his building. Now, when we walked it off the other day, he and I, we probably did walk around that pole because he had cars parked in his parking lot, but the issue that Mr. Hollis raised would be his issue irrespective of the existence of an easement or otherwise. I mean, if he had to do construction right now, his tenants wouldn't be able to park in his parking lot. Now, the reality is because all of the rest of that area is open, they go park on the field behind it. Well, that's what we want to get away from. We want to make this a lighted, secured, paved parking area. So I certainly understand and appreciate his concerns about what construction on his building might do to his parking lot, but that's, that's not something that Saint's is going to be able to remedy for him by giving him an easement on the east side of his parking lot because the fact is that if he has to have vehicles in to access the southern half of his building, he can do that with the easement that we have agreed to give him for that portion of the 20-foot wide alley that will remain open to him and that will remain accessible to him through his parking lot.
You have drawn up an easement? And you have presented it?
We have.
Okay. And Mr. Hollis, you've seen that easement?
Well, I just got, just got a copy of it this morning. I have.
He got the hard copy this morning, but I emailed him several copies of it. We emailed him last week. I don't know that he checks email regularly, but.
But let's, let's try this to kind of bring this to conclusion. If you would agree to a week's deferral so that you guys can work out the easement, I mean, again, there were no protests at the planning commission and for whatever reason, Mr. Hollis didn't appear. Staff recommends approval.
Correct.
It's a great improvement to the neighborhood. I just would like, if you could just take a week's time to go ahead and try to work out the easement, I'd appreciate that.
But certainly be happy to do that and that's.
It's a wonderful project, but let's see if we can work this out before next week, okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Meg, you want to make a motion for a one-week deferral?
I'd make a motion that we defer this for one week.
Second.
All right, cast your votes. This item is deferred for one week. Thank you all. Item 8C is next on our agenda, but it's been deferred until May 14th. Item 8D is an ordinance up for final hearing today. This is about the flashing yellow arrow from the traffic commission. Do we have any comments or questions? Anyone here wishing to speak on item 8D?
A comment, Your Honor.
Okay. Go ahead, Pat.
The, I think we need to make sure the public understands and we've got some signs up that explain it, but I think if you do a broader approach.
We can do some additional information on this, both on Channel 20 and our water bill insert.
I think it would be helpful to citizens to understand what that means.
What does it mean?
Yellow flashing?
Flashing yellow, how do you describe that to somebody?
It means yield. It means you have the right to turn, but you have to yield. You don't have the direct right of way.
The flashing means that it's going to be on, that it's going to continue to flash.
It's going to continue to flash, but a green arrow means you have, you have the right of way.
You have a protected right of way.
Right. This means you can go, but it's a yield.
Okay.
Replaces the old green sign. We had yield on green or left turn.
I see. Yeah, left turn. So, okay, that makes sense. Yeah, Larry?
Do we have any reports, Jim, on how the implementation of this has gone so far? Have there been any increase in accidents at these intersections because of this switch over?
You know, I can check on that. I'm not aware of any increases, but I will check into that.
All right, we're voting on item 8D. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8E is another ordinance up for final hearing today. This has to do with our retirement systems. This has been before council a couple of times. Any comments or questions here?
Move the item, Your Honor.
Okay. Do we have a second on 8E? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8F is another item up for a final hearing today and these are new policies, consider our water rationing. Item 8F and item 8G both have to do with these new procedures. Any comments or questions here on either of these two items? Yeah, Ed?
I'm grateful for the rain that we're having here in April. I'm hopeful that water conservation stays on our mind and that it doesn't succumb to the short-term memory we're all guilty of succumbing to sometimes. But I, in terms of this, I do have some skepticism as to whether this actually translates into reduction in water consumption, at least at the residential level. I just want to reiterate, we've talked about this before, that although we're all, I think, stunned to see people watering their yard at 3 o'clock in the afternoon on a hot August day, that really, outdoor watering really doesn't account for the bulk of residential water use. It's indoors and it's really in the bathroom. About 30% is toilets, more than 20% is the showers and then you throw in washing machines and dishwashers and you have the super majority of water utilization, at least at the residential level. So I know we can't retrofit all the homes in Oklahoma City, obviously, but if, if we do focus some of our educational efforts on Channel 20 and otherwise on residential indoor use and dual flush toilets and maybe lead by, look at leading by example and new city infrastructure, equipping city buildings with dual flush toilets and emphasizing conservation measures indoors as well as outdoors.
Yeah, it could be something we want to put into our Maps 3 projects, you know, going on.
Right.
If we're going to build a brand-new large convention center, we'd want to have water conservation measures, I think, put in there to kind of send a message. Building may be there a long, long time as we've come to know.
Right.
All right, could I do? These are up for final hearing today. How about a motion on 8F? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item 8G. Motion there? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8H is a public hearing today. This is the second time it's been before council and this is the issue regarding the Paseo District. Is there anyone here hoping to speak today on item 8H? All right, how about a motion then to move this along? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8I is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8I? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8J is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8J? All right, we have a motion, a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8K is a couple of revocable right-of-way permits. The first is from Iguana Mexican Grill who hopes to hold their Cinco de Mayo celebration on predictably May 5th. Is anyone here representing Iguana?
No, it's a great event. It's been very fun for the last couple of years. I would move approval.
All right, cast your votes on item 8K1. It passed unanimously. Item 8K2 is from the March of Dimes Foundation. They want to hold the 2013 March for Babies on May 4th at the Myriad Botanical Gardens. We have a couple of people headed to the microphone. Good morning.
Good morning.
We will need your names and addresses for the record.
Sir, I'm Jennifer Lacy with the March of Dimes. We're located at 5100 North Brookline, Suite 850 in Oklahoma City.
My name is Tim Miller. I'm a March of Dimes board member, have been for a long time. I live in Edmund, 13802 Crossing Way East, Edmund, 73013.
Nice of you to both come down. Tell us about the event on May 4th.
Well, we are really excited about this event. This is the 75th anniversary of the March of Dimes this year. We, this is our, we've been around in Oklahoma City March for Babies for how many years, Tim?
Since, well, since the early 70s, so it's been a long time.
Right. The event originated in 1970, so sorry about that. We have been, having our event at the fairgrounds for the last couple of years just because of all the improvements happening downtown. And this year, everything is open, the Myriad Gardens is beautiful. We thank you so much for your hard work on that and we are thrilled to be back downtown and put the city of Oklahoma City in a great light and bring our walkers downtown. We are celebrating the hard work of our volunteers. We set to raise money to prevent premature birth, birth defects and infant mortality and March for Babies is a celebration of that. We have about 3,000 walkers that will be coming downtown, getting together, fun activities for the kids, very family-friendly and we're thrilled to be back downtown.
Well, thank you for using the Myriad Gardens for this really worthy event. It is a beautiful place and it should attract lots of, lots of folks to the event, so I would move approval.
All right, we're voting on item 8K2. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thanks and good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilpeople.
Item 8L, I believe we do need executive session on this item. All right. Cast your votes to move that item into executive session, so item 8L will be dealt with later. Item 8M, I understand we do need executive session on this item.
Yes, sir.
All right, cast your votes. Item 8M moves into executive session. And item 8N, I understand we do not need executive session, so a motion to strike would be in order? Cast your votes. That item is struck. Item 8O is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under claims recommended for denial? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9 is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under item 9? Claims recommended for approval? All right, cast your votes. Those items pass unanimously. Our other items from council. Pat, you want to get us started?
Nothing, Your Honors.
All right, John?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Meg?
Yes, Mayor, if I could, I'd just like to remind everybody that today is the opening day of the Arts Festival. I was down there braving the rain and cold this morning with my VIP purchasing card and it was chilly. There were lots of folks down there, but it was cold and the artists were all bundled up in plastic sheathing on their tents. So I want to encourage everybody, this is a great week, opens today at 11 o'clock and runs through next Sunday. Fabulous food, lots of art, new cooking demonstrations and it's one of the things downtown that I think really pulls the whole community together. So everybody come on out and enjoy the art, enjoy the food and we hope to bring some nice weather starting tomorrow.
All right, David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to continue the discussion that Councilman Ryan brought up a couple of weeks ago about our planning division looking at a requirement to provide sidewalks on both sides of the streets. Currently, we just have a general requirement that sidewalks would be required at least on one side of the street. I think we should continue looking at that and move that process along. So I'd just like to continue to keep that in front of the council. And then secondly, I'd like to thank General Litchfield at Tink Air Force Base for hosting us last Friday at the COMSTAR program. It was the combat readiness session and we certainly always learn a lot whenever we go out there and it's, it's very rewarding to get to meet those young men and women in the military and the air force. And despite their budget problems, they continue to have a very high level of enthusiasm and confidence as to what they're doing and their abilities to carry out their mission. Thank you, Your Honor.
Pete?
Just a couple of things. Yesterday evening, I met with the principal and the vice principal at Lee Elementary School along with the chairman of the traffic commission and the school board member for that area and we looked at the parking and sidewalk and access problem to that school and I was reminded that all three of the schools that I have been involved with in the last year have the same problem. Kids don't walk to school anymore and so they have this huge traffic jam at each one of these schools and it's, and I don't think we thought about it much in the planning phase of Maps. and I don't think we thought about it much in the planning phase of MAPS, Master for Kids. I mean, just sidewalk access, that kind of stuff. Lee, Heronville, and Hayes are all three schools that I've been pretty closely involved with in the last year or two, and all of them have traffic jam kind of problems based on how few children walk to school. And with the lack of sidewalks, makes it even more difficult for those that try to choose to walk to school. There's no sidewalk for them to walk on, so.
Is it listed as one of, in the sidewalk master plan?
They may well be, but I'm, they're way down the, I don't know where they are. I don't know whether they're listed or not.
Okay.
But, but we need to think about that. I'm sure that that's not an area, that's not a problem just in South Oklahoma City. I know that's a problem citywide because...
That's what the sidewalk master plan is supposed to address.
But those three schools are just almost bound by the fact that you can't drive in and out, all three of them. You know, I go to the Reading Buddies Program at Hayes, and you park on a gravel road on the side of the road in a place where probably you shouldn't be parking. And part of it's because the street's not paved, there's not parking places at all along the streets. The same way at Heronville, there was adequate parking at Heronville, but if you were there when the children, the kids that go half-day, the grade school kids got out in the back, and you had the misfortune of only finding a parking place in the back. It was a 10, 15-minute wait to get out, and every morning that I go, when I'm coming downtown down Walker, I see the queue, sometimes it's two or three blocks long for, to drop off children. That blocks an entire lane of Walker. And the same thing in the evening, about 2:30, it blocks a whole lane. I just would like to see, not just sidewalks, but some look at that through the Traffic Commission. Fortunately, my appointee to the Traffic Commission is now the chairman, so I was able to access him and get him to come to the meeting with me, so I'm sure the message is going to get back, because it is kind of a mess there. And like I say, I know that's not just a South Oklahoma City phenomenon. I know it's going...
I see it too. It's universe.
It's going on every place you go by school, you're going to see it. And I just, we've been fortunate, I think, that we haven't had a child injured, because some of these situations are really bad. The one at Lee is really bad. Walker's a very busy street. 29th is a busy street. There's really no way to go west, where a child that happens to walk, there's no way for them to go west without having to walk a block north, then cross the street, and then come a block back south, which is not something a fourth grader's going to do if they have a choice to dart through traffic. They're not going to do that. I'd just like for us to take a look at that. That is, until I got there last night and listened to the principal talking about what she tried to do, we have one crossing guard there. There are really three potential crossing points at Lee, and we have one crossing guard who tries to control two of them, and then the principal tries to control yet a third one, and it just doesn't work. You know, we're just going to have a kid hurt really badly or killed cutting through traffic if we're not careful. Just, like I say, I know that's a global problem for all of us. The other thing I want to appreciate, I want to tell you how much I appreciate Councilman Ryan. Over the last year, it was my turn to serve as the MAPS Advisory Board member from the council, and because of some pressures in my practice, I wasn't able to do that, and he stepped up and did that for me. And this year, I was appointed today to do it, and I also should be vice mayor, and my practice pressures are not quite as great, so he stepped up to take a turn ahead of turn for vice mayor, and I appreciate that, because that's the kind of things that we need to, this council's known for civility and us, all of us stepping up and having each other's back, and I appreciate that, Pat, very much.
Thank you, Councilman White. Pete brought the subject up. The advisory committees and the main committee of MAPS really serve our citizens well, and they are passionate and intelligent and informed about the projects they're working on. I think it will help ensure that we get good projects. There's a tremendous amount of opportunity for the public to have input in our decisions to go forward. I would encourage people who are interested in a particular project, find out when the schedule of these meetings are, attend them, and have an idea of what the dedication the citizens who are on that committee, subcommittee showed. Thank you, Mr. Councilman.
Larry?
Couple of things, Mayor. Thank you very much. I'd like to congratulate the Windsor Oaks folks and the Windsor Hills folks for great neighborhood meetings last week. Both had outside speakers, and it was a common theme for both neighborhood meetings, and that was to try to educate our neighbors about the potential scams that are out there and the potential security breaches through the Internet, and both programs were very, very beneficial to the neighbors who were able to attend. Then, going over this, we have the similar situation in almost every school in Ward 3 as far as traffic. Quite frankly, Mayor, while sidewalks would be nice, the areas that I'm most familiar with, people are not able to walk to school or don't want their children to walk to school. As a result, they use the automobile, and our schools were not constructed with this kind of egress and ingress in mind, so you're going to have that problem. I'd like to congratulate, Jim, if you would, Stuart Chye and his staff. They have met with the principals at several schools, along with the police officers in that area, to try to minimize the best they can the problems that Pete was talking about. One thing that would help residents is read the signs. The school that I take my granddaughter to has a sign, "No Left Turn," and where I grew up, "No Left Turn" meant "No Left Turn," and people continue to turn left back into the major flow of traffic, just making the problem even worse. So, it's a multidisciplined problem, and sometimes parents, by exercising a little extra care, can help out.
If I could comment, you're right. It's a multi-phased issue. There's a sidewalk issue that's out there. On most of the Master for Kids projects, we did change the drop-off of patterns for most of the schools. Worked with the Traffic Commission, and we extended drop-off areas, and most of them got a facelift in that area. The fact of the matter is that the volume of cars that come in, it is not a walkable society anymore, and most of them are drop-offs on vehicles, and during that short period of time, it's really backed up. And so, the Traffic Commission has been involved, and you're right. I mean, we've got a lot of places where we've got no entrance into this street hours of 3 to 5, and people don't always read those signs and follow those signs, but most have been studied, and some level of traffic control has been implemented. I'm not saying they're all working, and I'm not saying there isn't. There's more study to be done. But again, it's multidisciplined. It's more sidewalks, it's more parental involvement, it's, you know, maybe some physical improvements, maybe some more information coming out of the schools, but there are issues that still remain in a number of the schools.
Maybe parents could walk with their kids home. Walk over there and then walk with them back. Just tossing that out there. Yeah?
Yeah.
Children coming and going, it's just full of families. It's just full of families walking. It might not be today. Only people get out today would be going to the art festival, but it is every, every day, at 11:30, 12:00, families walking back and forth.
All right, Ed?
Just keeping my fingers crossed on, I think the federal Senate today begins deliberations on the Marketplace Fairness Act.
Actually, it passed last night. The Closure Act passed last night on a vote of 27, or 77 to 20, or something like that.
Right.
It will be held by, vote with the full Senate will be Thursday.
Right.
Bigger, bigger.
The vote, that vote was to allow deliberations. They do that for two days, then the vote's on Thursday.
That's correct.
That's not a new tax. It just allows us to collect attacks that should be collected for online sales purchases. It puts our local businesses at quite a disadvantage, and I would just encourage everyone to contact their congressional delegation if they're so inclined. What, do you, if it were to pass, then the implementation schedule would be?
We don't know at this point in time. Then it has to go to the House. After it goes to the Senate, it's got to go to the House, so we don't know what the time schedule will be for hearing it in the House.
But potentially, I mean, the amount is debatable. It potentially has millions of dollars of impact to the city of Oklahoma City.
Yes, sir.
James?
Yeah, I was going to announce that there's going to be a public meeting regarding a senior living facility on Thursday at 6:00 down at Melrose Recreation Center. And so, basically, I just encourage anybody who lives in that section to come out and tell me what you guys think, whether or not you want it to happen or don't want it to happen. I want to hear your feedback. And so, that area is pretty much between council and Rockwell and Reno and 16th Street. So, if you live in that area, I encourage you to come out. Again, it's a Thursday, 6:00 at Melrose Recreation Center.
All right, thanks, James.
Yep.
City manager reports.
The city manager reports are listed under council items today, but they really are city manager reports. We're going to start out with Doug Dollar talking to us about the Total Care program. Total Care was implemented in October of '09, and it's worked really very, very well for us, and it's been going on now for nearly four years, and it's time to go back and reevaluate the rates. And we're not asking for a decision today, but we wanted to start the preliminary discussions in regard to the financial status of Total Care. So, Doug?
I'll just start with a little bit of background about the program. As Mr. Couch mentioned, it began in October 2009. It runs on an annual schedule of October 1 through September 30 each year, and for $3.65 a month, every member of a covered household, one of our city utility customers, is eligible to receive emergency medical transport by Emsa at no out-of-pocket cost. Now, of course, insurance or other responsible parties will be billed for their portion, but the members are covered and do not have any copays, deductibles, or any other costs from Emsa. Each September, we give our utility customers the choice to join or leave the program, and that election stands for the next year through September. Following the open enrollment period each year, we give a report back to the council on how things are going in terms of participation. Last October, in our report, we also noted that the monthly rate was going to have to be increased in the coming years to fully cover the cost of the program. If no rate increase is approved, starting next October, when we go through that annual program year, we're looking at about a $1.3 million shortfall in covering the costs of Emsa, and presumably, that funding would come from the general fund if we had to come up with that shortfall. So, when we look at, when we look at what's required to fund the program, we use Emsa's five-year projections of expenditures and revenues. Based on those expenditures, a rate of $4.66, $4.60 per month would be needed to cover all medical service program expenses through fiscal year 2016. This represents about a 26% increase over the current rate. And, you know, as we presented it again in last October's city manager report, the rate stabilization fund that's a part of this program was established as part of the original design of the program to allow us to charge a little bit higher rate at the beginning, so that over time, that rate would stay steady and not have to be increased. And we've come to the end of that time when the rate stabilization fund can fully cover those costs. Had we been charging the full cost in the current year, the rate would have been about $3.92 as opposed to the $3.65 that we're currently charging. Now, one of the things that's included in Emsa's revenue calculations is that emergency transport rate, what they charge citizens who are given an emergency transport, and that rate was raised last July to $1,300. That's the base rate for an emergency transport. Emsa's revenue projections include an increase in that rate to $1,800 next July, so July of 2014. Obviously, that increase would have to come before the council and for your approval, but it's presumed in the revenues that are in that option one at $4.60 a month. Another option that we'd like to at least give you to consider is raising that emergency transport rate in a kind of intermediate fashion, raising it to $1,500 this July and then up to $1,800 next July. The current rate is $1,300, so that'd be a $200 increase to $1,500 and then to $1,800 the next year. If we went this course of action, we'd have extra revenue in the current year coming in that would allow us to charge a lower per-month rate on that medical service program, and that rate would be $4.35 a month. That'd be a small, a 19% increase over what we currently charge, and we've labeled that as option two in the city manager report that you have before you. Then, one final option that we'd like to lay out there is to raise the emergency transport rate, as we talked about, to $1,500 this July, $1,800 next July, and then to take a more graduated approach on that monthly rate we charge medical service program customers, our utility customers, as opposed to setting it and leaving it for several years. We could gradually increase that each year, so that when we get to the end of the program, the type of increase that we're looking at is not as significant as it would otherwise have been. And so, we're looking at kind of a $4.35 a month in the coming program year, $4.40 the next year, $4.45 the next year, so that then when that, when that program is time for renewal, we're not looking at as high of an increase. That's similar to what we've done with utilities on water and wastewater rates, solid waste rates, kind of come in with a graduated increase each year rather than big increases every few years. And we've kind of labeled that as option three in the report. So, we're just looking for your direction on a couple of things. One, the transport rate, whether raising that to $1,500 in the current year is something you're interested in considering. And then, second, are you interested in setting that rate one time, leaving it set for like three years or so, or looking at that more graduated increase level? And so...
And there are many options. We can come back. We identified three. We can morph those into others. We had, we actually had five or six in the presentation last week, and we cut it back to three.
Your Honor, on this, the option three, would we have to approve those each year?
No, sir. We could adopt those, just like we do water rates, at one time, and then they would just be implemented at those times. So, it could be done as one vote, and you're adopting the future funding plan.
But should the cost increase significantly? Would we have the ability in year three to make adjustments?
Sure. We can always go back and modify them if we need to.
Okay.
The $1,500 transport rate, is that, do we have some evidence that that's the standard rate, or is that the rate that insurance companies would pay? Well, I don't, I'd like some background on where that comes from.
I'd have to get with Emsa to get some more detail in terms of how they set their rates. Obviously, they're under, they're working on the assumption that $1,800 next July is not an unreasonable rate.
I understand.
Obviously, Medicare and Medicare pay at a lower rate. They don't pay the full rate. Some of the larger insurance companies do negotiate discounts off of that, kind of a volume discount. So, that's kind of the standard rate. Obviously, there's different rates that get paid underneath that, but they all kind of tie to that top rate in terms of if you're getting a discount and that sort of thing. But my understanding is, they feel that that's a reasonable charge that will be covered.
Okay. Well, I would, I want to be sure that we set it at the highest rate that the insurance companies would pay, so we don't, we're not giving them a bigger bargain, since they don't tend to give us very big of any bargain.
Medicare number might be a good base.
The other thing I don't quite follow is, I don't understand, and this is, maybe I'm just too dense to do this, but you have option two, as you set it at $2.35, and it goes for, until the year fiscal 2016. But, and it, I don't understand why, why you would need a, I guess you anticipate that at the end, in 2016, you're going to have to have a substantial raise?
That's correct.
And if you get more than you need through these years? But why wouldn't, why wouldn't, why would not option three put it out another year or some other additional period of time?
We would have, we would have a larger balance in the, in the fund under option three.
It just wouldn't be big enough to cover what you anticipate fiscal '17 to be?
Right. Yeah, and it would just depend on how much more we need to raise. We wouldn't have to raise it as much under option three in that next year.
You would have a fund balance, so to speak?
That's correct.
At the end of '16.
That's correct.
I guess, you could raise, I mean, you could raise the transport rate to $10,000, and, I mean, Medicare is going to pay whatever they're going to pay. It doesn't matter what your transport rate is.
That's correct.
The transport rate really only affects people who aren't in the program, who don't have insurance.
That's correct.
Then they're going to be expected to pay. We raised it to $1,300 from...
It was $1,100 previously.
It's like a 40% increase in a year? I mean, if we were to increase this to $1,800, substantial?
Right. Next July is the presumption that it would be raised to $1,800. The, raising it to $1,500 from the current $1,300, Emsa projected would generate $400,000 to $500,000 more revenue from insurance companies, from providers, and that sort of thing. So, that's kind of the level of impact that we're looking at for that $200, from $1,300 to $1,500. It's about $400,000 to $500,000.
I guess I would ask just the rhetorical question of, why are the costs increasing so fast and so substantially? And I think it's trying to provide services to 620 square miles. And one question might be, should everybody pay the same rate no matter where you live? If you live 40 minutes out of the center of the city, you're basically paying the same as somebody that lives close to...
There is a mileage rate that's tacked on top of that base rate for $1,300. I don't know the exact amount. I want to say it's $9, $11, something like that per mile that they transport you.
But again, if you're in...
Obviously, if you... So, obviously, if you live further out, that, that does increase your cost.
But if you're in the, if you're in the program, you don't pay the cost.
That's correct.
So, the, so the, so there's subsidy of, of those costs? Okay, thanks.
Any other comments for Doug?
Would you like us to bring back these three options in any vote, vote form, or we're looking for a little, little feedback this morning? I've got some great questions, but...
I'd still like option three, where we can, you know, phase the rate increase in over time, and I think maybe we ought to look at what Medicare allows and what Medicare pays, some guidance on the ambulance charge. There are two different figures Medicare puts out in their statement.
Larry?
I like the idea of a phased approach also, not necessarily these amounts. I mean, that needs to be studied, but I like the idea of a phased, phased approach.
All right.
And I would agree with Councilman White that we ought to make sure that the transport level is as high as it can be, so that we're not leaving insurance dollars on the table. But I think the phased approach is probably, makes more sense.
Why don't we bring back a phased approach for a council consideration?
Great. Thank you, thank you so much for your consideration this morning. And also, on the hotel motel tax collections, I just want to point out that hotel collections are strong, up 9% through the first three quarters of the year, so they remain strong at this point in time. That's all we have this morning, Mr. Mayor.
Citizens to be heard? All right, we have executive session. We have returned from executive session, and we are adjourned.